Our heroes, our urban heroes for economic impact. So if please we could have Ray Harrington, Steve Letnus, and Pete Pepping join me up front. Yay! Give them a warm round of applause. A warm welcome. Come on up, guys. Come on up. I'm just gonna have you stand here while I read your praises, so don't be nervous. Steve, Ray, and Pete are being recognized as individuals who have stimulated revitalization efforts that strengthen and advance the community at large. Their efforts have made a positive and significant impact in downtown. Ray Harrington and Steve and Pete joined us downtown three years ago with the restoration of the Old Peters Building, which is now Seven West Tap House. They have moved toward the restoration and renovation of the Pioneer Place and the Veranda Lounge. As co-chair, as a co-chair of the Fifth Avenue Live Concert Series, Ray believes in creating a more user-friendly, updated, and intimate live musical venue in a space with a rich history. Ray has continued to show optimism, excitement, and creativity in keeping this tradition of recreation and art in our downtown. Steve Letnus has been in the restaurant business for 24, oversees 24 restaurants and bars in four states, including Grizzly's, Wood Fired Grill, Boulder Tap House, Seven West, Old Brick House, and Ponto and Lefty's Mexican Cantina. Pete Pepping started in the restaurant business 15 years ago, at 15 years old, and has been working with the Letnus Group since 1989. Now he's a partner of Ring Neck Restaurants Incorporated and operates seven restaurants in Minnesota and Iowa. Steve, Ray, and Pete have been active in our hospitality sector with such establishments as JD Beamers, the Rosaleries, and the Boulder Tap House. These individuals prove, they prove that when people come together, amazing things can happen. Please take the time to congratulate these guys and thank them for their fantastic economic impact that these investments have had. So we can't wait to see the many, many more investments that this group will want to take on. We know they've done good things. Thank you, guys, again. One more round of applause. And I'm going to give you one minute to speak. I'm so sorry, I didn't mean it. You can have as long as you want, Ray.
Great. I don't think any of us would move downtown to open a business realized that we were gonna have an impact at all. We just wanted to have a business opportunity. I think as we got into it more, we realized that downtown is the heartbeat of the city. And without a strong downtown, we'd be in big trouble. So I want to thank all you business owners and property owners and people that are downtown on a regular basis, because we need everyone to be involved, we need everyone to work together, which we can prove we can do, to make this downtown the best downtown we can make. So thank you all very much.
It's pretty tough to follow that. I know, I know a couple of guys that can follow it no problem. I want to honor our urban heroes for vision, Josh and Brandon, Josh Hoffman and Brandon Johnson of the Copper Pony. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so I would like to share with you, Josh Hoffman and Brandon Johnson are being recognized as individuals with extraordinary passion, a vision of how increased vitality benefits our local economy and quality of life, and whose actions inspire others. With the opening of the Copper Pony in May of 2017, they have added to the tapestry of art and fun in our downtown. They have been awarded, they were awarded the 2017 Zonta Christmas House Award for Best Decorator, and the 2018, and in 2018, they were named Retail Star for Creative Excellence by Home Accents Today. Yay! This award goes to only 50 home decor businesses in the entire country. In 2018, they were also top-three finalists for the Best Home Decor Store by the St. Cloud Times Best of Central Minnesota Awards. Yay! Yeah, they have created and participated in numerous events, so, such as their Ladies' Nights, Small Business Saturday, Art Crawl's, Harvest Party Hop, the Ho-Ho Holiday Party, and the Winter Warm-Up. They have shown great leadership and heart, and as the owners and visionaries of the Copper Pony, Josh and Brandon know that Minnesotans yearn for a sense of community. They love a good laugh, and for the most part, we enjoy being with one another. They strive for our events to include an element of fun and create a sense of community while adding value to busy lives of those who choose to attend. Beyond hosting special events and collaborating with our neighbors, they do their best to promote downtown to their customers face-to-face while they're shopping and via their social media platforms. Please, take a moment to warmly welcome and congratulate Josh and Brandon for having the heart of downtown. All righty, so you're welcome to speak, please.
Be really brief. There's a few things that we believe. We believe that every home should look, feel, and smell good, and we have plenty of those products to help you make sure that your home does just that. The next thing is, we're borrowing from Paul Wellstone, but we believe that we all do better when we all do better. And that is a foundation block of how we have built our business and how we intend to continue to build partnerships with other businesses downtown so that we can thrive together. And the final thing that we believe is, what do we believe? It like escaped me there for a while. Oh, I know what it is. We believe in downtown.
Our next hero that we would like to award today is our urban hero who has downtown vision, that just, you know, this long-term vision and this plan. So please, help me warmly welcome Donella Westfall of Jules Bistro. And I would love as much as Jules' team to come up and receive this honor as well. Yeah, thank you, thank you. So, Donella Westfall and her hard-working team at Jules Bistro are being recognized for projects and programs that showcase excellence and leadership as demonstrated by outstanding initiative, impact of work, and inspiration to others in downtown. Donella and the team at Jules Bistro have shown passion and vision in the way that they've used their newly expanded restaurant for successful live and local programming, sold out beer and wine dinners, and numerous community and private events. Donella has been supportive of many different community initiatives, including supporting and leading the historic downtown art crawls, Operation Baby New Year Diaper Drive, the Common Roots Music Festival, Pathways for Youth, Anna Marie's Alliance, Catholic Charities Food Shelf, and much, much The ease in which Donella makes it look is second to none in our downtown. So please warmly welcome, thank, and congratulate Donella and her team for their vision of downtown.
Probably the first thing I should say is that when I read this bio to my husband, Brian, and I got to the part about how I do it with ease, he said, "They really have no idea where to start." It's an honor to be here and to be in the company of other business owners downtown that have been mentors and friends to me. Vision, vision is great and ideas are great, but they really don't mean anything unless you have people who can breathe life into them and make them happen. And I'm really proud to say that I'm not the one that does that. I come up with the ideas and about eight out of the 10 land up on the cutting floor. But the people behind me are the ones who really make the magic happen at Jules, and I'd like to introduce them to you. April Shifting on the end is my bakery manager. Melissa Kester is my front-end manager. Ryan is my food wizard, that's what I call him. And Brian is my husband and my business partner and a fellow introvert who's managed to maintain his introverted status. The best part about the last two years with Jules is doing it all with all of you and doing it with all of them, so thank you.
So, that is, those are our three Urban Hero Awards that we've given out in the past, but this year we've decided to add a fourth Urban Hero Award. We had sort of a exceptional circumstances arise, and after much conversation, we felt that it was very important that we created a Lifetime Achievement Award, and with that, we would like to honor the Hall family. So please, welcome up to the phone. Come on in, come on in. Get yourself in home. We're all family now, come on in. So, the Lifetime Achievement Award is being given to the Hall family of Matthew Hall Lumber. John, Dan, and the late Lauren Hall of Matthew Hall Lumber are being recognized as members of a downtown business who during their lifetimes have made creative and consistent contributions of outstanding significance and who have contributed to community for over a century. The St. Cloud Downtown Council is honored to award the Lifetime Achievement Award to Matthew Hall Lumber. They have been serving central Minnesota for 129 years. Matthew Hall was founded, they founded the company in 1889 on the banks of the Mississippi River in downtown St. Cloud. Today, the company still resides in the original location. Matthew Hall Lumber has strived to be a staple in the community with involvement in the Community Foundation, St. Cloud Downtown Council, the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce, Metro Lions, and the United Way Heroes League, along with many more. Matthew Hall Lumber was sold on January 31st, 2019 to another local lumber company, Simonson Lumber. The company will remain at its current location and continue to be involved in the community programs and be a member of the St. Cloud Downtown Council. These individuals and their family business proves that community is built on the people who invest in their neighbors and that long-term dedication shines through in more ways than we could expect. Thank you again to John and Dan Hall and the late Lauren Hall. Thank you.
It's been a quite a year for the Hall family. Hope I can get through this, but I want to thank Bonnie Hall, Lauren's wife, who's been who's been with us through everything from 2008 to 2010, when we went from a $50 million company to a $12 million. We had 120 employees in 2006, and in 2010, we had 50. And we built it back up to those figures. And was to help again with my wife Nancy, if I could, hold the applause, because there's a couple of them here, but my son Matthew, you want to come up? My daughter Anna, who are named after the founders of our company, Matthew and Anna Hall. My son Joseph. Abby, Matthew's wife. And Matt Claire is my daughter's husband. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
So again, I want to thank everybody, and two things if I can relay it out here to the business world is, is having an estate plan, stick to it, and buy insurance so you can do these things. And if you'd have told me sitting here last year at this time that we would be sold, it was the furthest thing from my mind, but when my brother passed away, things just fell into place and we're able to do this. So I got to retire, I'll be eight weeks on Friday. I never thought I'd say this, but I like to say universal healthcare now. But, I have to get into political. But anyway, it's a great award. My brother Danny is at a funeral in California. Our uncle Elmer Maher passed away here on Thursday, and he's out there at the funeral, so kind of representing him. So Elmer's from the Maher family, I'm by St. Wendell, the Mahers, Maher realty. But anyway, thanks, everybody. It's a great award, it was a 130-year run, and again, with 14 our employees and our clients, we wouldn't be here today, so thank you.
Thank you, Hall family. Thank you for being here today, and thank you to all of our urban heroes. We really appreciate all that you do, we really appreciate the power and energy and excitement that you all put towards downtown, and all of you other heroes in the world that aren't being recognized today, you're all still heroes too, for getting up and doing it every day. So thank you, thank you again. Let's do one more round of applause for everybody. All right, so now we are going to move on. I've got a couple special guests that I would like to introduce to you today, and hold on one second here. So, these special guests, so we have partners, we have some new things going on downtown this year, and we've got some community partners that we've been involved with for many years, but I still wanted to bring them up and reintroduce you, and we'll see what's new. So my first special guest that I would like to introduce today, her name is Allison Dudek. She works for Stearns County Statewide Health Improvement Program, and she brought her counterpart, Mariah, from Benton County Statewide Health Improvement Program. And these gals are gonna have a couple of minutes just to give you a brief update on what's new. Come on in, welcome Allison and Mariah.
Like Jolene said, my name is Allison, and I have with me Mariah. I work for Stearns County Public Health, and Mariah works for Benton County. We also are partnering with Sherburne County, but Janine was not able to come tonight. So, we just wanted to give you a quick update on what public health is doing here in St. Cloud. We have a grant called SHIP. It stands for the Statewide Health Improvement Partnership. SHIP is an obesity prevention and tobacco use or exposure reduction grant. And one project that we've been working on is active transportation with the city of St. Cloud. So, in 2018, we applied for a bicycle-friendly community designation for the city, and we were awarded a bronze-level designation. And our Bike and Pedestrian Steering Committee that we have is still active, it's called Bike St. Cloud, and we are working to improve biking in the city. We have a couple projects that we're working on that we would love to share with you. First of all, you'll start to notice some bright green bike racks installed around downtown St. Cloud. We have 22 racks that will be installed that we've purchased with our grant funds and partnered with City Public Works to install. There are a few that were installed yesterday already, and more will come once they can start pouring concrete. The other opportunities we have are promotion for Bike to Work Week. National Bike to Work Week is May 13th through the 17th, and through the SHIP grant, we're doing some promotion, and we would love for you to promote with your employees. Those that submit a photo of themselves biking to work this week with the hashtag #BikeMeetsWork2019 will be entered into a drawing, and we will deliver breakfast to those that participate the following week. And then lastly, we are trying to kick off a bicycle benefits program downtown St. Cloud and in the surrounding area. So, this is a national program for businesses to choose to participate in. It helps to build your loyal customer base of bikers. We hear from a lot of our surrounding communities that bikers have money, so this is your opportunity. Also, this provides an incentive for bicyclists to choose to bike to your business rather than hop in their car and drive to your business. So, we save on parking and we get people a little bit more active. So Mariah and I will be hanging out around. We have more information if you want to connect with us. We would love to partner with some of our local businesses. Thank you.
I want to thank Allison and Mariah. I recognize the value of partnerships and being friendly with our county and city counterparts, and to recognize that we're all working towards a reasonable goal. So please, find Allison and Mariah, find out what you can do to help improve the health of your customers and create a more bike-friendly community. My second guest today is a city of St. Cloud employee. His name is Sergeant Tad Hessian, and he is with the Community Engagement Division of the St. Cloud Police Department. Please welcome Tad Hessian.
Good evening. On behalf of Chief Anderson, the entire St. Cloud Police Department, it's my honor and privilege to be here tonight. Also, Jolene thought it'd be a good idea to have a cop here, I'm not sure why. The Community Engagement Division is a newly-founded, is a newly-founded name, but it's not a new concept, what we've been doing. Our idea is that we have a unit or a collaborative effort within the police department to partner with community partners such as yourselves. What we know is the city of, the Downtown Council and the downtown businesses have had a great partnership with the St. Cloud Police Department for a very, very long time. What we're here to do, or what I'm here to do, is to extend that kind of vine again to let you know that we want you, if you have any issues, if you have any concerns, whether it be event planning or anything that we can help you with, we want you, if it's an emergency, to call 911. But if it's something that you want to plan out, or something you just have some things you want to talk about, I'm here to give you my business card. And contrary to my wife's popular opinion, my cellphone is on here and I do answer it all the time. She loves when I say that and then I subsequently don't answer her calls, but that's okay. But I want to leave these here for you, so you guys can come, feel free to contact me anytime you have any concerns, anything that we can help partner with. And that's essentially the message I want to give you, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. My third guest is a business owner that has opened a brand-new business just across the street at the 912 Regency Building. Please put your hands together to welcome Ashley Green from Greenthump.
I didn't realize I was coming up so quickly. I have so many people to thank for this moment. I'm just kidding. I'm Ashley Green, and my business Greenthump, et cetera, like Jolene said, I'm across the street in the Regency Building. What I do is I specialize in custom furniture upholstery and wedding and event floral. So, I chose downtown because I love downtown and I'm so excited to be here. It's been such a great community to be a part of, and there's so many amazing people down here, so I just wanted to thank Jolene for inviting me to come here today, and thank all of you for being so warm and welcoming. And yeah, if you need any wedding or event floral or custom furniture, or if you want to come check me out, just get in touch with me. Thanks.
Ashley's got some amazing energy. She's very, very talented. I saw this coolest video that was like on high-speed motion of her doing a chair, and so it is a very cool thing. Upholstery is just something you don't hear about as often anymore, and everybody knows of that old chair, they just don't want to give up, so find Ashley. That's, thank you, Ashley. I have a fourth surprise guest, actually, it would be fourth and fifth because they come as a partnership. I would like to welcome David Boyer and Megan Frias. They are the owners of Jupiter Moon Ice Cream. David and Megan, come on up. Thank you guys for being here. Welcome.
Hi, I have a question for you all. So what's your favorite flavor of ice cream?
Just shout it out. Now that's why the police are here.
So that was actually an experiment. All of you, when you thought of that, you smiled just a little bit. That's why we're doing this. We want to bring ice cream to downtown St. Cloud. This summer, we're gonna start with a cart, a bicycle cart, that is. We'll be at Summer Time by George, we'll hope to be on the sidewalks and street here in downtown St. Cloud for events. We're gonna start small mode and grow. We've been partnering with some local businesses around the area and hope to do that with you as well.
Yeah, to that end, it sounds like we're in the right place. You guys are all about community, and that was something that was really important to us. So we partnered with Gaslight Creative, who did the branding, and it's pretty adorable. They did a great job. We gave them quite the, quite the job. We were talking mermaids and space and they tamped us down. And then we're actually partnered with Mixing It Up in Sauk Rapids for our kitchen right now. So if there's anything that you think that we should be collaborating with together, let us know. We would love to work with all of you.
Yeah, and I will just throw this little plug out there. That kitchen in Sauk Rapids, it's great, but it's this big. We are actually actively looking for a larger kitchen to be part of. If anybody knows, we'd love to hear from you. You can find our information at our website, which is jupitermoonicecream.com. Our contact information is there. We hope to be out in about mid-May is where it's at, depending on health inspections and things like that, but come on out and we'll see if we can get you some ice cream.
So this is pretty exciting. Is this exciting? This is kind of cool, right? Okay, so I've got a couple more tricks up my sleeve here. I would like to introduce our fifth surprise guest. This woman has had a business in downtown St. Cloud for quite some time. I hope she's here, I haven't seen her yet. There's Jill Hertz in hand, please come up to the front with Body Kinetics.
I'm probably only the tallest woman in the room wearing bright red pants. Well, thank you, everyone, for inviting me. My name is Jill. For those of you who don't know me, it's just Jill. I own Body Kinetics Massage Therapy here in downtown St. Cloud. I've been here in downtown St. Cloud for over eight years, and I'm here to announce my expansion into float therapy, which is going to be a new, profound, amazing, out-of-this-world way to help with your mental and physical health care. For those of you who are unaware of what float therapy is, I'm gonna put you in a dark room with 10 inches of water and 800 pounds of Epsom salt. It's going to be dark, soundless, and amazing. Statistically, 45 million people suffer from anxiety and some form of stress, and it's the sixth-leading nationwide disability. Anxiety. That started working. And statistically, that high school students today, in high school, have the same mental stress that a 1950's mental health patient did. With overstimulation, it is going to be a much-needed and much, much profound, amazing healthcare technique that you can use. That's an alternative healthcare. You can use it with massage or by itself. It's gonna be amazing. Amazing, amazing, amazing. So Body Kinetics is going to be expanding into float therapy, and I'm also here to announce that we are accepting opportunities for founder members. So, Body Kinetics. Does anyone know what float therapy or sensory isolation is? So sensory isolation means that our brain can only, can only receive so many messages before it starts to block out other sensories. And currently, we intake so much sensory input with our screen time, our static noise externally. When we are in a deprivation or sensory isolation, we can start to listen to the internal messages that we're receiving instead of the external static.
Talking about the charter membership and what the expansion means, what can this crowd help you with?
So what this crowd can do for yourselves is to become a founder member or a charter member, which means that you're going to receive unlimited benefits that non-members will receive as being a charter member. You're going to be able to float for 90 minutes when there's an availability, instead of just the 60. You'll get VIP membership status, your own private area for showering lockers, instead of just a community area. for showering lockers instead of just a community area. And you're also going to receive the benefits and a soft-open membership, which means you'll get to go to party first. You'll get to float first, and you'll get all of the discounts first.
Very cool.
And that's not me.
Very cool. Nope, that's not you.
So Body Kinetics is going to be expanding and offering charter memberships. And also, I see a friendly face, Amanda. We're going to be looking into the Health Network and creating a network of healthy people and healthy workers. And Body Kinetics is going to be a part of that as well.
Excellent. Thank you. So that's another exciting new announcement. Things going on downtown. We have two more left. We're going to wrap this up. So everyone came back to networking and have a drink and an hors d'oeuvre. I would like to invite Matt Foster of Foster Inc. LLC. Are you here, Matt? Maybe Matt was unable to make it. I'm afraid that he said he might have had a time constraint. So no Matt. We're going to go ahead with our last special guest. Our last special guest has brought something to St. Cloud that it was new to me. It was new information. He's been partnering with some of our downtown businesses to promote this. And so I would like to introduce JJ Kern and Molly Winters to come on up with the Minnesota Lakes Area Snowmen, the Midwest Premier Football League.
Well, thank you for having us here. Thank you very much for letting us come here and let you know a little bit about us. The Midwest Premier Football League, it's a semi-pro football league that we're going to be playing at St. Cloud State University with the Minnesota Lakes Area Snowmen. You've got some football fans here. How about the Vikings? You like the Vikings? Well, we have former Vikings helping us with multiple free youth football camps. We did 16 last year to help with the league grow. And then our opener, which is upside down. We've got Tommy Kramer going to be coming, former Viking. Leo Lewis and Rufus Best. We're going to be doing a free youth football camp, followed by our game against a team out of Brainerd, the Central Lake Serpents.
And the party at Advanced Prepare.
Yep, we got Advanced Prepare. We're going to be doing the day before to bring recognition there for the team as well as for them for helping support us. Also, Howie, we've done some stuff over there where we brought former Vikings, which is gratefully appreciated. So if there's anybody who wants to get a little bit more information from us, we'll be around. And we have free tickets for you to come to the first game. And then to help get the word out, the camps we do are completely free for the kids. So we want as many out there as possible. It's K through 8. And then the older kids can help with the younger kids. So we're helping team-building as well. And also, I think I'm interested in floating too, by the way. Because we've got a lot of stuff going on, and I think that might be something for us. So I'd like to talk to you as well. Thanks, Advance, Howie, everybody in the community. We're really excited to bring these former Vikings. They're really excited about being able to put on these free camps for the kids, which we're going to then be developing a football league out of it as well, which you can get more information as well. So thank you, everybody. Tickets.
I've just got the tickets and the schedule. So just meet me over there if you're interested in grabbing some free tickets. Get them out, get the kids out, and thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. That was great. So that was the end of our special guest today. And we're wrapping up the end of our ceremony. We did pretty good. It's seven minutes to six. So without looking at my clock, I'm feeling pretty good about it. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thanks for taking time out of your busy schedules and to put aside all of those pressures of work and just come and relax. So Gail wants me to remind you that if you have not yet put your business card in the drawing box, we want you to do so right now. Like, race over there because I'm going to start drawing right now. So now's your last chance. Go ahead and throw your business cards in. I'm going to give you like the Count of Jeopardy. Who wants to sing? Charlie, can you play some? No, I'm just kidding. Jeopardy theme song? I'm teasing. I'm just teasing you, Charlie.
Ellie. Ellie, I would like to call Ellie up, please. Come here, Miss Poison. There you are. Thank you.
You're going to give me a hand with this. I'm going to introduce you. Okay, all right, now it's going to be time for Tim to bring me that drawing box so we can get this party going here, finish it up, and get these drawings done.